Okay, welcome to the boardroom. Tonight is Monday and the Board of Commissioners are now in session, March 14th, 2016, the day before Election Day. So we want to encourage everybody, if you've not voted, to make sure and go out and vote and do your civic duty tomorrow on Election Day. We always be in our meeting with a prayer and a pledge, so this time if everybody would please stand if you're able to. And Commissioner Brown, we'll listen to our prayer.
Bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you for this day. Dear Lord, we thank you for all your many blessings. And we thank you, God, for just saving us one day. And Father, we pray, God, that you just be with us tonight as we go into this meeting. We pray, dear God, that you would lead us and guide us in everything that we say or do here tonight, Father, and God, that everything that we do will be to uplift our community and our county. And Father, we pray, God, that that will be done, these things we ask in thy precious name. Amen.
Commissioner Hollifield, what's your order of prayers?
Yes, let's all face the flag, come to attention, hand over the heart, so that the light may. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Seager. Okay, gentlemen, at this time you have the minutes before you. What's the pleasure of the Board concerning the approval of the minutes?
Motion approved.
Second discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye. I oppose like a sign. Thank you, gentlemen. We have the agenda before us tonight. You've had opportunity to look the agenda over. What's the pleasure of the Board? Are there any additions or deletions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I asked that we add an addition in reference to resolution, discussion, wishing to adopt.
Okay. You've heard the motion, the statement, the request?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye. And I assume you just approved the agenda too, correct?
I will.
Okay, good. All right, let's move to our first appointment. We have a very special person with us and a 100-year-young gentleman is with us. And we're so excited to have this gentleman with us. And Randy, I know you had a part in this. If you don't mind, go ahead and take the honor of introducing this fine gentleman and we'll proceed on.
Okay, we have with us Mr. Carl Wolf. Mr. Wolf will be celebrating his 100th birthday year very soon. And he's a Second World War II veteran. And what we're going to do is call Allen Maynor up to the podium, and Allen will be conducting the program for us.
Allen, glad to have you, sir.
Allen is American Legion Post 54. And what other credentials do you have go along with that now, Allen?
Okay, start off as Post 56.
56, I'm sorry. Rexaner. Being, you know, you can't win them all.
No, I can't win them all. Also, I'm the Department Vice Commander for Division Five, which is all of western North Carolina, from Hickory all the way to Tennessee and up through Virginia, in charge of all the posts for the whole western part of North Carolina. There's five divisions in North Carolina, minus Division Five, starting on the east coast with Division One and working towards the west coast. So, well, the west. So, we don't have a coast over here, do we? Lee James has got.
It's a state line, I believe.
Correct, correct. Okay. This evening, I'm very honored here to be a part of this. County Commissioners, I want to thank you all for allowing us to do this. It's a very honored privilege to come before you and present these awards. I was approached by Don Markham a couple of weeks ago. He said we had a special person in our county we wanted to recognize. And I said, "Well, there's a lot of special people here." He said, "Well, this is a very special person." He said his name is Mr. Carl Wolf. And just so happens, he happens to be sitting here on the front row with us, right behind that little walker. So, Mr. Wolf, thank you, sir, for being here. And we do appreciate, a pleasure for us too, sir. What we wanted to do was to honor you tonight. I know your birthday is not until this weekend, March the 18th, I believe. You were born in 2016. You'll be 100 years old. You were born 100 years ago, so that makes a pretty good little thing there.
I don't intend to stop it either.
I don't blame you. I wouldn't either. I'd go on and on, just keep on going till you can't count no more. Very good there. But we've got a lot of people in here. There are a lot of veterans in here. We've got a lot of American Legion people in here. I'm not going to run the program. I just want to turn it over and turn the mic over to people. But I do have some awards that I wanted to give you for tonight. One of them is, I want to give you, because you are a World War II veteran, the American Legion has a policy, we started it this year with a decision we made at one of our meetings, that any World War II veterans, we wanted to honor them because of your service and the sacrifice you gave to our country. We wanted to honor you with a lifetime membership paid into the American Legion. You won't have to pay a dime. We'll pay that for you. And with the subscription to the magazine, we'll make sure you have a card that you can carry with you. There's a lot of benefits with it. So, we want to make sure that you are at least given that opportunity. I have a certificate here I'd like to give you, and there's some other certificates out here I want to have those gentlemen present you with also. And I believe that Mr. Hollifield has a certificate also tonight to give to him. So, but I'd like to start this off and give this one, and then probably Steve Bush, he can give off the next one, which is the part of the proclamation. Or we could do, let's do Doug. I believe Doug would be better because he has the initiation into the Legion. Again, it is my honor to be here and represent the American Legion, the state of North Carolina, Division Five, and Department of North Carolina, and give you this special presentation of an honorary lifetime membership. So, thank you, sir.
I don't have to live this long to get a membership.
David said turn the mic up.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wolf, it's my honor to present this certificate of invitation to the American Legion. It's presented to Legionnaire Carl Wolf, Post Number 56, Department of North Carolina. It's March the 6th of 2016. It says certified participation and invitation of veterans and to membership in the American Legion. The validity of this certificate is contingent on the holder of a current membership card of the American Legion. It's signed by Mr. Allen Maynor, Post Commander, and Post Adjutant William Poole.
How are you, young man? Looking like a young man.
Again, County Commissioners, thank you, gentlemen, for the opportunity as veterans to acknowledge one of our own that is, again, 100 years blazing the trailway for, I'm probably the youngest veteran in the group, this generation just retired 2012. So, Mr. Wolf, it's an honor to be able to stand before you today and knowing what you've done for us. But we have a proclamation for today. Proclamation for Carl Wolf, the American Legion, McDowell County Veterans, McDowell County Commissioners, and the great citizens of McDowell County are proclaiming that it be known, whereas Mr. Carl Wolf served in the United States Army, and whereas his time in service was during World War II, and whereas he served in the Pacific Theater, and whereas he served with the 82nd Signal Battalion, 10th Army, and whereas he was stationed in Okinawa, Japan, and whereas he was discharged honorably as a corporal, therefore be it proclaimed that the County of McDowell, the City of Marion, and the great state of North Carolina do jointly declare this day, March 14th, 2016, as Carl Wolf Day. And be it further proclaimed that when asked to commemorate, and commemorate, excuse me, the contributions and sacrifices of those men and women who placed their lives in harm's way, preserving American values and protecting democracy for the world, and be it finally proclaimed that the observance of Carl Wolf Day appropriately pays honor and expresses gratitude to all those who have served and ever worn the uniform of any of our great military services and gave so much to the world and our great nation, to be proclaimed this 100th birthday on March 18th, 2016, signed by our Commander, Mr. Allen Maynor, and Board Commissioners, Chairman of the Board, Mr. David Walker. So, Mr. Walker, congratulations.
Y'all gonna make me cry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Mr. Wolf. We hope you're around for a much longer time. We have one more award here. It's a Service to America. Certificate of Appreciation presented to Carl Wolf, United States Army, a proud World War II veteran. In solemn recognition for the sacrifices and leadership of the men and women of the greatest generation, in fighting to preserve a free society, you won the war, built the peace, and gave future generations a precious gift of freedom. As a national monument to your World War II services dedicated in Washington, your fellow citizens honor you. We pledge that your heroic achievements, commitment to freedom, and leadership of your comrades will not be forgotten. In witness whereof, this testimonial, a personal gratitude is presented by the undersigned March 14th, 2016, signed underneath by Commander of the American Legion Post 56, Allen Maynor.
I'm gonna have to build a new house.
Our board is not gonna be outdone now. We've got something for you, gentlemen. You know, veterans get the credit for every freedom that we have out here in the world in our country today. And this is a certificate of recognition from Matindale County Board of Commissioners. It recognizes, it says, "Recognizes U.S. Army Veteran Carl Wolf on his 100th Birthday." And it reads like this. "It is the veteran, not the preacher, that gave us our freedom of religion. It is the veteran, not the reporter, who gave us our freedom of the press. It is the veteran, not the poet, who has given us freedom of speech. It is the veteran, not the campus organizer, who has given us freedom to assemble. It is the veteran, not the lawyer, who has given us the right to a fair trial. It is the veteran, not the politician, who has given us the right to vote." This is signed by all of our board members.
Bless all of you, and I really and truly appreciate this. I'm overwhelmed and I'm speechless, so I won't give a speech.
We thank you, sir. We thank you.
Got one more little thing coming in. I believe we got one more thing coming in.
Let's do a Happy Birthday!
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, Mr. Wolf. Happy Birthday to you.
My neighbor. Thank you.
How's Kansas out?
A lot of Brooklyn. When I was younger, they told me it was full of land.
Put a 100 down there, we'd set off the smoke alarm.
I am really indebted to all of you.
How about all veterans stand and give him a salute?
Mr. Wolf, on behalf of our board, Randy's already presented, but this is what, this is what we love about county government. When citizens bring something as great as your service to our board's attention, and then your 100th birthday, and we can have a little part with the gentleman, the veterans present here tonight, men and women honor you, that is what it's all about. To me, that's as important as going out and building a new school or building a new building. The honor, the people who went before us and who've provided the opportunity for us to come and gather freely tonight, to conduct business on behalf of the county and the people within our county. It's truly an honor to have you in our boardroom tonight. And to all the veterans present, thank you so much for seeing the need to recognize this gentleman, this veteran, this true American. I mean, we're losing a generation before our very eyes of men and women who knew what it was about to be an American. Nowadays, everybody wants to draw a check, live off the government, and have everything given to them. Your generation is the generation who set the mark high. And I hope our generation can come in and achieve half of what your generation has done. So, I want to say thank you tonight. We've got to move to other items now. I think Allen's had all the formal items we have for Mr. Wolf. But we want you to know that we appreciate you. And the veterans, we appreciate every veteran in the room tonight. And again, thank you for honoring this man and his family. And let's take a brief recess so we can have some pictures taken with this distinguished gentleman tonight, veteran, okay? The board's in a brief recess. Okay, after a recess to honor one of McDowell County's veterans, Mr. Carl Wolf, who turned 100, we took time to celebrate and have fellowship with him. That's why we were not on air, but we're back on the air now. So, this time let's move to our next item on our appointment schedule. This will be Item B, and this is Administrative Items Budget Update Matters. Mr. Wood can go ahead and lead the sound.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to briefly mention the kickoff that we are starting the budget meetings with department heads. I have a couple scheduled tomorrow. Really, the next couple of weeks for me and Allison and other staff will just be meeting with departments and internal agencies to hear their budget requests and prepare the document. We're still on target for an April 30th presentation to the board. So hopefully, between now and then, we'll have a good document to recommend for your review. And then you would have, obviously, until the end of June, to review my recommendation to then make it your budget. So, we'll look forward to that process. And I mentioned in the memo that traditionally we'll have agencies like the Fire Commission, the School Board, and different ones that will request a meeting. And so, as soon as we hear a request for that, we will certainly communicate it so you can see what works best for your schedules. And next, we do want to move into some more routine matters. And Allison is here and can maybe kick off. I put the project ordinances first so we didn't, so I didn't miss those, if you wanted to start with those.
Sure. The first one I have is the Universal Career Parkway Skill Center project ordinance. This is another amendment, and it's reclassifying the electrical contract to regular renovations. The next one is jail and courthouse. This is Amendment Number Three. And in a few minutes, you'll see the offset of that in the general fund, that it is transferring additional funding sources from the general fund to this project for change orders, et cetera. GF 28 is transferring $3,572 between economic development and Universal Golden Leaf. GF 29 is jail and courthouse project. This is transferring $414,978 to that project fund. Last year during the budget process, I believe, the county manager, Chuck Abernathy, at that time, mentioned that the county would fund $250,000, and this does include that $250,000. GF 30 is legal, is transferring $8,791 into special matters from workers' comp and building vehicle insurance. GF 31 is cooperative extension, appropriating $2,000 in education revenue that's been received to the education line item. GF 32 is emergency services. This is transferring $2,000 to kids' safety camp for the upcoming kids' safety season. GF 33 is allocating $91,042 of transportation funds that are received from the state. GF 34 is allocating $6,155 to discounts, that's for the tax offices for discounts given in the month of July and August. GF 35 is appropriating $5,000 of concealed weapons to supplies. GF 36 is appropriating $2,630 of federal funds received for DSS and also transferring between the various line items. FD 1 is appropriating the estimated revenue that we will receive in the fire districts, and an offset is the fire district expenses. UNT 1 is the appropriating $7,742 of rental income between the various line items and the universal enterprise fund. It's different from the universal Golden Leaf fund. And that's it.
Okay, gentlemen, you've seen and heard these items. Comments or questions for staff?
Is the Golden Leaf grant about done?
We're closing that out in the next couple of months, and then there's a monitoring period, but actual funding, we should receive the final reimbursement from them in the next month or two.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? There have been, now, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve GF 28 through 36. FD 1. UENT 1. I don't believe I missed any of them.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Have a second.
Second.
Discussion. William, if you don't mind, real quick, GF 32 was money allocated to the kids' safety camp. Can you just tell a little bit about how successful it's been the last couple of years?
Yeah, so we've had a corporate sponsor the last three years, I think. Duke Energy sponsored Kids' Safety Camp, as well as some other entities, but that's been extremely successful. We've had, I think last year, over 25 different agencies participated, the county fire departments and rescue squad, in getting kids to the camp, they're taught CPR, first aid, and various other agencies come and present safety information. This will be the sixth year we probably train. Over those six years, probably over 1,000 kids have come through Kids' Safety Camp during that time.
Okay.
It's a three-day camp, which parents pay $20 for three days, free coughs affected.
Okay, any other comments, questions? We're still in discussion. There have been, now, what's the pleasure of the Board?
The vote.
I mean, all those who favor the motion say aye. Any opposed, like a sign. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Now, let's move to the next item.
Sure. I may flip a little bit on the list you have on your computer to go ahead and take care of one item since William is here. We had a retiring deputy, and traditionally, they retire in a good standing, I guess. The sheriff will request that you allow the deputy to receive the badge and purchase the firearm. And so, you have a resolution requesting that for Officer Deputy Randy Branton.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board?
I make a motion we accept that resolution that we made for, second option.
Discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye. Any opposed, like a sign. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Wood can go ahead, sir.
The next one, it's an item that William brought to you, I believe, last month or the month before, where you approved moving forward with the purchase of a new ambulance for this year. And this is something that we typically ask the Board to do, not every year, but typically that's the way it works out. William has sought bids, and he has those in here, and so I can let him give more detail on the bids, and then Allison is here to talk about the financing for this vehicle and some sheriff's vehicles as well that we can talk about.
Mr. Keller, welcome to the boardroom. Good to see you, sir.
Tended a number of board meetings, but I can tell you, tonight was a board meeting that I won't forget during my career. That was a humbling experience to see that, so. We did send out the bids upon your direction for one new Type 1 ambulance, four-wheel-drive ambulance. We received two bids back. As I stated in my memo, we had two companies that bidded. One was Northwestern Emergency Vehicles out of Jefferson, North Carolina. We have purchased vehicles from them before. And Southeastern Specialty Vehicles out of West Jefferson. This company had not bidded before. The recommendation is to go with Northwestern Emergency Vehicles, $197,555. That is not the lowest bid, as you see in the memo. I've made that determination or the recommendation based upon the lowest bidder not being in compliance with the bid. And it's, under the bullet points, they proposed a 15-year warranty where our specs say that it's standard 20-year warranty on the modular box. Their standard conversion warranty is 12 months. Our bid and all of our trucks have seven-year or 70,000-mile warranty. And they also did not have, they took exception to our crash worthiness standard and documentation, they could not provide that safety certification on the modular box. So, based upon those exceptions that I have taken, that is the reason that I've not recommended the low bid. The difference in it was right at $8,100. So, you'll notice this bid is higher than what we have made in the past. As I stated, back in January, there's new safety standards that are out on the vehicle. The one standard alone adds $9,000 for the stretcher mount in the ambulance that secures the cot. It's a new type of restraint system. I've looked at it. It's been demonstrated, I think it promotes more safety or enhances the safety for the patient in the back of the truck, as well as the crew members. And certainly, what I've seen, I agree with that change that they've made. The other thing that's driving the impact, there's 2% chassis increase across the board from ambulance manufacturers, or the vehicle manufacturers, and a 3% increase in ambulance building fees. What we also did in this is, we have typically purchased stretchers as a separate capital purchase, and that has been financed separately outside of the ambulances. It is more cost-effective for us to include this with the ambulance manufacturers, with their bid, as well as the preventative maintenance contract. So, all in all, that is where these things have converged to increase this bid higher than what we have normally seen. We've been purchasing stretchers, we've been purchasing a lot of this equipment, but it's more cost-effective to include it in the bid, and the price is actually a lot more favorable to us than purchasing them separate from individual vendors.
Okay, comments, questions for Mr. Keller? We can see definitely why you recommend the second lowest bid. You got the bid per the specs, and they did not do it.
Yeah, they were not in compliance with the bid specs.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those who favor the motion say aye. Any opposed, like a sign. Okay? Mr. Keller, thank you, sir.
And next, we had, related to that, of course, is the financing for the EMS vehicle. There's also five sheriff's vehicles, which, again, this is fairly routine, where they annually- There's also five sheriff's vehicles, which again, this is fairly routine where they annually purchase four or five vehicles for their operations and it's very routine. And Allison can go over the financing package presented.
BBNT responded with the lowest rate of 1.99% for four years, semi-annual payments and arrears. The amount that, total amount that we would be financing is $371,140.13. If you all approve, there is a resolution that BB, attached that BBNT requests that you all vote on.
Okay, comments, questions? Make a statement, we've got to buy four cars, five cars every year so our department can respond and have the surety that the cars will arrive on the scene because when the call's made, we want them to be at our house. So any other comments, questions? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion we approve the financing resolution with BBNT vehicles.
Give a motion?
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, like a sign. Okay. Ashley, have we covered everything under Appointment B, under our appointment schedule? Okay? All right. Staff, thanks. And Ms. Keller, you're here for our item C, the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So sir, if you don't mind, lead us out.
Every five years, the county along with other jurisdictions is required to update the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Last cycle, McDowell worked alongside Yancey, Mitchell and Avery County to formulate the To River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan and at the time, the board agreed for that plan to be consolidated into a regional-type plan. It was the first one in North Carolina to be approved by State Emergency Management and FEMA and this was done under a grant to construct the plan and update it every five years. So it is that time once again, this, the result of the planning initiative is a comprehensive, multi-jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan for the region that meets the state and federal requirements and by updating it, it ensures that the participating municipal jurisdictions maintain their eligibility for certain types of state and federal funding programs. It lays out a number of recommendations that we have worked towards, several of these recommendations in the past and they were completed, a total of five were completed over the last five years. A lot of those dealt with flood planning with the planning department and building inspection department and it gives a series of recommendations moving forward to complete or a series of goals for emergency management as well as the county moving forward in the next five years. It is required to, for this plan to be updated for the jurisdictions to approve resolution. The city of Marion is, will consider adopting on Tuesday and then the town of Olford is considering theirs tonight.
Okay. Comments, questions? I assume there's not been any problem with any of the other four counties who are involved in the plan with us, right?
Yeah, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any issues with the other counties involved in the plan.
Other comments, questions? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the resolution approving the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, like a sign. Okay? William, thank you. Good evening.
We appreciate that.
Thanks for being here tonight. At this time, we'll move to item A, under New Business. This is concerning the hospital property request and we have Carol with us tonight and Bobby Young. So Ashley, if you want to preface this and then they'll come up to the podium and we're glad you're here tonight. Good to have you. Not yet, you're good.
We have heard from McDowell Hospital several times over the last year and a half or so about their new hospital project out on the property and to give a brief history of the property, the county purchased it about, around 1980 and part of the idea at the time is that Marion General Hospital would move out to that tract of land. And so your predecessors as the Board of Commissioners sought permission from the state to allow a transfer of property, no cost, to Marion General Hospital, which is now McDowell Hospital. As part of that transfer, there was a reversion clause over the entire tract and the gist of it is if McDowell Hospital ever moved or went out of business, that sort of thing and it was no longer, property's no longer used for hospital, the property would revert back to McDowell County. As part of this project, which Carol can get into more detail about, there is a small tract of less than an acre out of the total 50 acres that will be utilized by a third party for the project and they are going to construct a building for use by McDowell Hospital, but as part of the process, they're requesting that you release the reversion on that specific piece of property, not the entire tract, but just that very small piece. So that's a pretty, hopefully a decent summary of it. We have met with Carol and discussed the request and you have maps in your packet that you've looked at and hopefully had a chance to review, but hopefully that's that in a nutshell. Were there any questions about that before maybe they had filled in the blanks?
Ashley, our board attorney has reviewed the documents that are before us and has found no issue, correct?
As far as, you know, the general request, he didn't see it as being a big issue. You know, most attorneys, when they look at things, you know, they maybe have, you know, reservations about counties giving away property, you know, which is essentially what theoretically could happen in this case, but, you know, he said he didn't think he was going to stand in the way of the process, so.
And the positive thing here is this that needs to be taken away from this action the board will take tonight, that mission is requesting this for medical purposes to have another addition to the hospital that's going to serve the people in McDowell County. So that's, that's the caveat, I think, that we need to keep in mind as we release land because nobody wants to give away land, but it's for a medical purpose and it enables our people to be able to have services provided locally and not have to go out of town, which is important.
And I think the spirit of the reversion is that, like I said, your predecessors wanted to make sure that property was used for medical purposes and that's what it is. If it was for a Walmart or a gas station or something, I think you would be having a different conversation.
And we're talking .77 tenths of an acre.
Right.
Surrounded by all other land.
And can we prove the contingent that it still will always be used as medical service?
I think per the documents here, now, you can answer, you're the pros right here on the hospital side. Carol, come on in. Just introduce yourself as part of the formalities of you being here tonight so everybody who's watching will know who you are. We know who you are, but they may not.
Okay. Carol Wolfenberger, President, McDowell Hospital. Thank you again for listening to our request tonight. The request is posed mainly because we have a partner in our development and so a requirement of that development for the developer has to have approval from the folks that they deal with and so part of that was we needed to get a subdivision and to do that, we needed to have the reversal on the deed. And so we're requesting the 0.72 acres request from you so that we can waive that portion of the reversal. And when I delivered the documents to Ashley last week, I know that one of the deed is short and sweet, you know, two pages, but the longer one is the Declaration of the Easement, which actually is a document that I signed, but that you all actually endorse that you understand what that declaration is. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, I guess. Mr. Brown, back to your question about contingent upon. I think it's probably, really has to be a waiver of that section of property. I think if you, if you've had a chance, it's a long document, the declaration. I think that there's verbiage within that document that pretty much protects that, the portion that it's dedicated to medical usage.
Okay. Tony, it's.
I'm not an attorney, let me put that.
Well, surrounded by land that still has the restriction.
Oh, I know that, I know that.
Any other comments, questions? For Carol. You must have done a good job because no comments or questions. Bobby, you want to add anything?
No, we just really thank you for letting us come tonight and for supporting the project. I think the community's all getting very excited about it and I think it's going to be a little exciting.
Thank you so much. Would this be completed prior to the main hospital proper being constructed or would be sort of simultaneous at the same time going up?
No, the one thing that we want to make sure of is people know we're still taking care of patients and so we need our current facility until we actually occupy the other facility. So we, we work diligently, you know, with William Keller and, and the other leaders within the community to make sure we transition appropriately. So our current facility will be functioning until that point where we move 100% of the operation over into the new facility.
The .72 of an acre that this building is going to be constructed on, would it be completed before, or I guess if it go up at the same time you're putting up the new hospital, correct?
It's simultaneous and they're, they're joined, so it's the medical office building portion that's joined to the hospital portion.
Okay. Other comments, questions? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
We have three. Declaration of easement, subordination agreement, deed of partial release. Right. Make a motion we approve the Declaration of easement, subordination agreement and the deed of partial release as presented.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, like a sign. Okay? Thank you, ladies. We appreciate you being here. We appreciate the hospital and, and I talked to people in more rural areas that do not have a hospital in their county, so we do appreciate the fact there is a presence. We have a medical facility here that will here again provide and meet the needs of our people. So that's what we're here to make sure our people's needs are met and you're going to do them. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, at this time, let's move to item B, under New Business. This is the tax matters. Mr. Wood, anything you want to lead out on here?
These are, have the typical releases, refunds, et cetera. We did have a, essentially a typo on a business listing that's in your packet. We would just ask that you would approve that, essentially re-lease and rebill for that particular business.
Okay. Comments or questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, like a sign. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Now this time, let's move to our next item under New Business, item C. This is the DSS retention schedule. Mr. Wood, go right ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Last month, you approved a retention schedule for the sheriff's office and this is very similar. And again, this is a document that the state archives formulates and approves and essentially sends it to the counties and says, this is the new schedule you must follow. The end. You know, there's no back and forth or comment, that sort of thing. So essentially, all you can do is just approve it.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion on the floor to have a second.
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, like a sign. The shortest matter we've ever dealt with as a board, I believe, after explanation. Let's go to old business, item A. This is the courthouse and jail updates. Won't take, won't be quite as short. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
No, on this one, just the typical update, the broken record that the, both projects continue. I mentioned last month that the jail were seeing the light at the end of the tunnel a little bit closer than on the courthouse. If you've driven on Spouting Road, you see, you know, walls and roof and all kinds of great work that's happening there and it'll hopefully wrap up around May. The courthouse is obviously a little more involved. Where we're at there, the security corridors, holding cells, those things are essentially complete. If you see the driveway out here beside the courthouse and between City Barber, they are working on the water line that you have approved previously. That will provide fire protection for the holding cells and also provide a separate domestic water for the courthouse because right now, they're connected to this building. So as part of this project, we separated both buildings on electrical and water, which if there was an issue up there and we needed to cut off water, we had to cut it off for both buildings and same with electrical. So it just made sense to do the investment for that project. So related to that original scope, you know, we're pretty close to wrapping up what we've talked about with the elevator and the security enhancements at the courthouse. We've talked about fairly recently flipping of the lower-level courtroom, which is primarily for district court. I know last month, it was asked that we evaluate alternatives. We've looked at and talked to an architect about doing an alternate space and designing that and we're just, we've had some drawings and discussions and we're just not ready to move forward and want to talk to some of the judicial officials on that, but in the meantime, we have this flip that we'd really like to get completed, get the contractor released so they can go on and do other great things in the community. We talked last month about the House Theater and using that space temporarily. So keeping in mind that we're not going to have an alternate site anywhere in the facility anytime soon, we would ask that you let us enter into a lease with the appropriate folks at the right time and move forward with that temporary location. So I am asking for maybe a direction and approval on that tonight.
Okay, gentlemen, 30 days ago, we asked our county manager to put that on hold till we had opportunity to find out more information on sites for that third courtroom with hopes that we could maybe construct a third courtroom and then go back and do the flip and not have to spend money off-site and hold court off-site. The architect and staff have met and I've been in a meeting too and there's still more work to be done there, so we don't have, we don't have that locked down. The board has not had a chance to look at documents yet together, so as much as I hate to spend money on a lease off-site, it looks like we're headed that direction. I mean, I don't know of any other option we've got. Do you, Mr. Wood?
I don't.
Because it takes 30 days to get your wiring started, schedule court two months out.
I'm afraid if we, we put it off any longer, we'll have an issue with the contractor where we have to release them and in order to do the flip, it very well could be more expensive to rebid that work. So it's cost-efficient to use them while they're here, but if they have to go off and rehire people and all those things, we could be looking at a lot more cost.
And we'd already voted prior to go ahead and do that courtroom flipping question, so we are obligated to, contractually, to finish that work. Comments, questions?
Do you need a motion to authorize going there?
I'd feel better to spend money.
For the lease is what you need the authorization for. I make a motion that we accept the terms of the lease agreement in order to keep this project going.
Second.
Discussion.
I think we did the right thing by waiting 30 days and getting full detail. I think it's good, good business. Clears our minds that we're doing the right thing.
Well, we're trying to save the county taxpayers money is what we're trying to do and it didn't work out this time.
Yep.
Okay? We're still in discussion. The motion's second on the floor. Any other comments? There being none, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, like a sign. Okay? Mr. Wood, go ahead.
To close out the current work that's going on, I did want to bring forward a, a request from the architect firm that's been working on the project. They had, have essentially, their contract was not really for a set amount of time, but what they estimated to be a set amount of time, they had estimated that the work would have been done by now, so they had done their billing based on when they thought the project would be done, which obviously it's not. There have been a few things that have, you know, and issues they've encountered that weren't known, you know, a lot of it being with the courthouse, you know, it's just an older building, that sort of thing, and different change orders and so forth. They are requesting, if you would consider additional compensation on top of... They are requesting, if you would consider additional compensation on top of their contract amount. And that request is in your packet, and I'll say it for the public to hear, is approximately $33,000 to close out the project. I told them that was more than I was comfortable and probably allowed to approve, and I was going to have to take that to the board to review.
This is the architect that done the jail?
Right. Currently.
Well, I can say right off, I'm not comfortable with it.
I'm not either.
I'm not comfortable with it. That's the figure I've got in my mind.
I think that's zero for the, for the record, Madam Clerk.
Yeah. We'll give you another month on this one to talk about it.
Well, I think there's been some general dissatisfaction is the word I'll use in dealing with this firm, from not just this board, from the other people involved, I'm not going to say names, but other, other people involved in this project. And if he saw an issue, why didn't he contact us sooner and say, hey, we think there's an issue here, we want to bill some more? And, you know, somebody gives you a $33,000 bill and say, here, pay this. You know, I had to do this, this, this extra. How long have you been on the project? Over a year, maybe, since inception? And if you say you're going to require more funds to complete your, the job, you need to be billing, talking, communicating, not just in one lump sum. Hey, I need $33,000 to finish this project out.
Well, I can say on personal experience that I remember we ran into something similar to this where there was $150,000 involved and whenever we took a hard look at it and it wound up just being $21,000. So I think it needs to be looked at again.
Okay.
I think I have my direction.
Yeah. Loud and clear.
Anything else under that item, Mr. Wooten?
No, I did, I will mention, moving on from the existing work, if it's okay, that maybe to give an update that we have a meeting with a different architect, different firm, Chuck Hamrick of Holland &amp; Hamrick Architects, who's done many different projects for the county over the past 20 years and done fantastic work. He has been meeting with staff actually for the last six or eight months and they've looked at and will be making recommendations and have made recommendations on several things, including resealing of the parking deck, meeting with a structural engineer on that, and have been, so we should have a estimate on that fairly soon. He has met with us on replacement windows. We have an HVAC quote that they have provided us. So we, I guess to repeat what we've talked about previously, we had mentioned to the judicial staff and others that we were going to look into these different items and determine what can be done, you know, as the next steps. I think it was the board's direction that once this work was done, you would then go on to, okay, what's next? Heating and air seems to be a popular item, new windows maybe done at the same time. So that's what we've been receiving the last couple of weeks from Mr. Hamrick. So once this work is done, we can then move on to the next phase. And that's been communicated to judicial staff that we are proceeding with getting good information to review within. Any questions about this work that's been going on involving, you know, different space additions, improvements and that sort of thing?
The elevator will be completed when?
I hope by the end of April.
Clerk took a ride up on a platform, so minus a while, so it looks like they're getting closer.
They are. And again, part of the issue why that's taken longer is the original proposal was, it was an inspected elevator, you know, legitimate and everything, but we requested that they do a standard elevator like you have in this building with an equipment room and everything. So that involved more time and effort and design, so just took a little bit longer to get that installed and would have liked.
Well, the public just needs to understand that the county is working, it's a work in progress. There's lots of communication that's going on between staff, architect, mechanical engineers, electrical, whomever, to eventually have that courtroom completely renovated to where it can be used for years to come. It's going to look clean, it's going to be updated, have a modern elevator in it, and the board has decided to stick with that facility and so we're going to spend some money in it, but it's going to be nice when it's done and the public will be able to use it. I think it'll be a building they'll be proud of.
It's a commitment we've made as a board and we're all together on that and it will happen.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Next we had an office space.
Item B, office space recommendation.
I'll just keep going. I'm going to get ahead of you. At last month's meeting, we talked about, we've encountered an issue where we're running out of space in county buildings. This one in particular and others are bursting at the seams. Maybe an exaggeration, but we are on top of each other, running out of storage space and different functions. So made a request to the board that we look at available buildings in the area and come back this month with a recommendation on whether there's anything out there or not or how to proceed. In our evaluation, we didn't have to look too far to our, I guess, to my left, I'm not sure, the cardinal direction off the top of my head, I guess to the south. There is a two-story building, I think years and years ago, it was maybe the Cable Vision Building. Right now it's a gray and red building adjacent to this building. It has been on the market for several years, it's been vacant for several years. The county purchased the small blue building adjacent to it maybe five or six years ago and we use it for storage right now. We have looked at the building to our south, had a building inspector look at it, his letter is in there, and determined that it's a solid building. Essentially, all the partitions and offices and everything just aren't in great shape since it's been abandoned or vacant. They need to be ripped out and really start from scratch, but structurally it's sound. It would be very functional for whatever we determined for the need and the use, but we did want to bring that recommendation to the board. The building, as you see in your packet, we, and sometimes folks watching don't get the wrong idea, but sometimes property will be purchased and sold below tax value, which isn't always the case, but the tax card does show a value of $91,920. The property had been listed for a little under $80,000 and we have negotiated with the Realtor and the seller has come back with the price of $70,000 that he would accept. So it would be staff's recommendation that you accept that, that you authorize the purchase of that building for $70,000 and allow us to proceed with the closing, earnest money and that sort of thing.
Okay, gentlemen, I'm sure, I know each one of you's been over and saw the building, toured the building, looked at it. Specific comments or questions for staff at this point?
I think it's going to be a real asset and, you know, it's not like I'm going to buy a building way out on 590, it's right next door and we really need it to. We could make a little hallway to connect it and, you know, it appears to be quite easily to renovate it to our needs. It's very structurally sound.
Well, it could possibly accommodate or communicate accommodations to the judicial system that we're trying to be pleased in the structure of the courthouse. So there's, it's an area that could be used.
Okay, other comments or questions? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, you oppose like side. Okay, thank you gentlemen. At this time let's move to item C under old business, grant update and approvals. Mr. Wooten.
Okay. This one could, maybe we could get bogged down on, but the gist of it is, we are a member of Isothermal Planning and Development Commission, which is also known as Regency, and for many years, we have relied on their services for grant administration. So CDBG grants, ARC grants, that sort of thing. We've received the grants, the board has approved them, they do all the hard work and, you know, we get the investment, water lines, renovated buildings, whatever. They're having some issues that's really out of their control. They've lost some funding from the state and different agencies, and so they've had to scale back what they're able to do as far as grant administration. So it's left us in a little bit of a bind in that we don't have the staff or the expertise here to administer some of these grants. So what they have done is identified Western Piedmont Council of Governments, which is based right outside of Hickory. They're a larger organization, you know, they've got Hickory Morgantons, those municipalities and counties. And so they have a much larger staff that is able to handle some of the projects that we need assistance with. A couple of them being the Nebo interchange waterline project, the Universal Waterline Project. So really, we are, have been in, after today, won't be, but have been in a bind in that we've got these projects that we need to get going and we didn't have an administrator to follow through. So like I said, Western Piedmont has stepped forward, they've called right away, they're very helpful. And so they have sent a very large package of documents that is in your packet.
Yeah.
And I can read them off just for the record, but the gist of it is, these are a lot of CDBG plans that you need to approve. And there are three administrative contracts for the three different grants, and the third one is the Commerce Fellows Grant that we're able to send Mr. Conley off for training. So they're all interrelated in that you're approving different CDBG plans that are very normal and we do every five or six years, but we do have the three administrative contracts as well. And on top of that, on a related note, we have a resolution that allows us to sign some of these documents as well. So a lot I'm asking for there, just to sum it up, asking you to approve the CDBG plans, the administrative contracts, and the resolution. It's as simple as I can make it, I think, for the record.
Okay. Gentlemen, what's, any comments or questions first? You've had this packet of material, you've had a chance to, if you had a question about any of the 10 items he's asking us to approve, you've had opportunity to call him, find out what he's talking about. So what's the pleasure of the board, if there are no questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There she goes.
Discussion?
Kiss method, keep it simple.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, you oppose like side. Okay?
Thank you.
Let's move to the Greenway Phase 3 update. Mr. Wooten?
Yes, sir. This is a very brief update. Just wanted to mention that last month we talked about the Phase 3 match. Since that time, we've officially communicated with the City of Marion, your request for $45,000 of assistance on that. We've submitted a Kate B. Reynolds grant request for $100,000. We've met with NCA Wildlife for approximately $11,000 local match, which if you add all that up, it's a little over $150,000. That is either verbally committed or pending. We'll hear about the Kate B. Reynolds within the next month, and the City of Marion probably later in their budget process towards the summer. So that is proceeding and we'll continue to look for additional sources before we go too far with the project. Commissioner Hollifield suggested some different funding sources that we're looking into and others that may come about. And there are specific parts of the project like horseshoe pits and dog parks and different things, dog park, that may be of interest for different folks to fund. So at that appropriate time, we will maybe seek out those funders. I did want to mention as well, next month, the McDowell Trails Association has requested to be present to make a sizable contribution of $15,000 to the board, and so that's very good news. And I'm sure you'll be happy to accept it.
Gladly, gladly.
It's not on, in your packet, but I did want to mention, just as a point of information, we have been working with the Trails Association. They've been working as a liaison, as they have in the past, on some easement issues with accessing the property. The current road that goes into the park, we've determined actually crosses two other properties, and so our attorney, Mr. Coates, is working up a road easement. That would essentially allow any of the three parties to traverse that road. And so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and if you had any issues, we can bring it before you, but otherwise, I feel like we have enough staff authority to maybe move forward and maybe bring back the final document, but we are working on that as we speak. And that's all I had on the Greenway.
Okay. Comments, questions? There being none, thanks for the update. Let's move to item E. This is board appointments, and we have a balance sheet in front of us. We have the planning board with a vacancy, a full sitting board member. We have two alternates. Normally the practices of the board is to move in the first alternate who was appointed as the alternate first forward. In this case, it's sort of unique. We have two alternates that were both named the same time, same day. So we're being asked to vote on one of the two current alternates to become a full sitting board member. So if you can mark your balance sheet and pass it in to our clerk, she will tally the totals and... While you're finishing that up, we have a Regency Workforce Development Board. We've got an application that you see as a second reading, Nikki Pittman. Then you have Steve Early and Mark Weber as a first reading, and they're both reappointments.
Do we move on to one?
Do we have, do we have a balance sheet on the Regency Workforce on the second reading?
On the second reading? No, that's just one, Nikki Pittman. And you approved that last month.
Okay.
And she is filling a position that was vacated by a Rutherford member and so they're wanting her.
Okay.
The other two are reappointment.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and take care of that next one. Tally of the balance.
Oh, Randy's holding back on this.
Well, there's a couple lines there, I thought we went up under this one.
Yeah, hanging Chad.
Yeah. Hanging Chad, that's right.
Haven't heard that in years, have we?
The votes are unanimous for Van Boyd.
Okay. If you'll notify Mr. Boyd, he'll be a full sitting board member. At this time let's move to item D on our appointment schedule. This is our citizen comment section. We've already covered everything on our agenda for tonight, minus reports, communications.
Got one addition.
Oh, the addition. We went and added the resolution under new business, we'll do that as item D. And this is in response, Commissioner Crowe called me and stated that his concern over the situation in Charlotte, the position that the Charlotte City Council had taken concerning the transgender bathrooms, restroom facilities, and I thanked him for bringing that up because I said, that's an item that concerns me too. that up because I said, that's an item that concerns me too. Being a husband with three daughters, that's troubling, to say the least, that they would even consider doing that. They did do that, and he had desired to have our board look at the option of having a resolution drawn, and that resolution being sent to the governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general, and then our senator and house member, Ralph Feis and Josh Dobson, concerning our desire to see the state step in and prevent an item that was introduced to the Charlotte City Council by a convicted sex offender to begin with. And so with that being said, Matthew, anything else you want to add to that?
That covers it. Gentlemen, the way I looked at it was, I may one day have a little girl, and I don't want her going to the bathroom with someone that could potentially harm her.
Yeah.
And we have that on our wall right there for a reason when he's standing for it.
Yeah, and, yeah, it could be boys too. I mean, it's with pedophiles and people who have deviant behaviors, they don't discriminate a lot of times. So anyway, any other comments, questions?
Other thing I would say is that, you know, people will comment, want to know why county government should get involved, and we took a stance on same-sex marriage, and I don't have a bitter problem saying, you know, I made the motion twice that we defend that. Marriage is defined between one man and one woman, and this falls right in line with that, and I know that state government governors even looking at possibility of overruling Charlotte's vote. But also, when you think about it, we do own county property. We have recreation facilities, and we will be faced with that. I would hate to think, just like Matthew with my kids, that they would have to face something like that. Probably would not be a pretty sight coming from my dad, I don't think, if something goes on, especially when that was brought about by a pedophile. And we have to watch out constantly for our kids, the future of our kids, not only through education, but through protection from adults that have a very, very sick, sinful mind. And so I have no problem at all.
The same county that voted for the marriage amendment is the same county that we represent here tonight.
Exactly right.
And we represent the morals and that they stand for, and so we're 100% with it.
I think we need to be leaders in this and move forward with this and, you know.
As of date, no other county in North Carolina has done this, and we're not doing it just to be the first. We're doing it because it's the right thing to do, I think, as a board. It's the right thing to honor a 100-year-old man who's a veteran, and it's the right thing to go on record and state our opposition to something that is not right. So with that being said, all those in favor, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send a resolution to our elected state officials, asking them to ban transsexual individuals from having the option of what bathroom they attend.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye opposed, like side. And that was definitely a five to zero vote. Okay, at this time, we have, are there any reports, communications, before we do our citizen comment?
I did want to mention, because it's been asked of me, the senior housing study that was commissioned quite a while ago should be ready to be presented at the April. I did confirm with the consultant that they will be here at the April meeting, and part of the delay there is that the original gentleman that came to make that initial presentation has left that firm, and so they had a little bit of staff turnover, and so the new folks, you know, picked up the, you know, baton or running with it, but they will be here at the April meeting.
And along the same vein, you know, you hear some discussion, different parts of our county about public transportation, and here again, we've just been at, sort of at the mercy of the state who was, who's to do the study, and so we can have good information to make any kind of a decision regarding that.
And I haven't confirmed with the consultant, but I did request of Lisa that the consultant be here at the April meeting to give an update on how they're going to do their process, so hopefully we'll have some good information next month.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have, we are now at item D on our appointment schedule, citizen comment section. Nobody signed up. Does anybody wish to speak that's here? Okay, come on up, my friend.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye opposed, like side.